It is Monday, September 16th at 7:30, and I call the meeting of the Brainerd City Council to order. Tony, can you call the roll?
Yep, go ahead.
O'Day.
Here.
Stunek.
Here.
Terry. Stingline. Here. Johnson.
Here.
Chesak.
Here.
Bevins.
Here.
Bedeau.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number four is the approval of the agenda. Is there a move to approve?
A move, Johnson.
Second.
By Johnson, second by Stingline. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item five is the consent calendar. Notice to the public that all matters listed are considered routine by the council, will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless good cause is shown prior to the time the council votes on the motion to be adopted by roll call. Is there a move to adopt the consent calendar?
So moved, Stingline.
Motion's by Stingline. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Stunek. Any discussion? Hearing none. Tony, please call the roll.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunek.
Yes.
Stingline.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Chesak.
Yes.
Bevins.
Yes. The consent calendar is adopted. Item number six is presentations. Item number six A is the Blade presentation. I don't know who's coming forth to make the presentation. Come on up, tell us your name and address, and tell us all about Blade.
All right.
And can you do it in less than, like, how long? Fifteen minutes? Ten minutes?
Oh, definitely, yeah. Nine, ten.
Five minutes, yeah. Okay, thank you.
I talk fast, so it might be shorter.
And your name and address?
Talia Broadhead, 2102 Bradley Court, Brainerd, Minnesota, 56401.
Thank you.
So I am here to fill you in on all the exciting news. All right, let's figure out how to do the clicker. So we started in 2019 in Crow Wing County and to combat the drug use in our county. And in 2023, we, last September, we were awarded, we were one out of two coalitions in Minnesota to receive the Drug-Free Community Grant, and that is providing $125,000 per year for the next five years. And so since then, in the last year, we've had many successes. We're kind of driven by the and follow guidelines from CADCA. And our goal is to increase community collaboration, develop a youth leadership council, provide them the training and the education to kind of come alongside us and fight the substance use kind of disorder in our youth, build and maintain relationships with the school districts, and we also provide training and education for our members, and then just continue to support and stand by the recovery community. The Drug-Free Community Grant is made up, and our coalition is made up of 12 sectors, and we have really, really strong members from each sector, and we continue to grow. So I think I really want to celebrate and kind of just mostly as our successes and what we're doing in the community. And within the last year, we've served over 900 students as we've partnered with Minnesota Prevention and Recovery Alliance, and they provide a Know the Truth program. And so myself, last year, have gone into the schools. We've been in Brainerd High School, Brainerd Learning Center, Lincoln Education Center, and the Forest View Middle School, seventh grades. And so I go in there, I bring people with lived experience currently, clients that are in the Minnesota Adult and Teen Challenge Program, and they come out and share their lived experience. And I feel like that has the most impactful kind of statement with the kids. They're really interested and ask a lot of questions. But from personal experience, we know that kids start using or experimenting or are first exposed, mostly, I mean, usually like with a family member or a friend, and they're just not really aware of the consequences and the dangers that it really leads to. We're just kind of, I don't know, society, it just kind of, a lot of things are normalized, you know? So that's a pretty big part of what we've done the last year. We've also had two of our coalition members, myself and Kelly Johnson, we're both really huge advocates in the program, but we went out to Arizona with some in-depth education supported by CADCA. And so we graduate in December in Washington, DC. And so we just kind of bring back everything that we learned from there and kind of put the boots to the ground. In January 2024, with the help of Opiate Fund Relief in Crow Wing County, we awarded $200,000 in grants to 11 local organizations. And so we have quarterly grant meetings, and they all come in person and provide updates. And our next quarterly grant meeting is September, it's in two weeks, the fourth Friday of this month. So excited to see what they're all doing. Their initiatives align with Blade's initiatives, and so partnering with them has been really successful. Back to kind of like the youth leadership council, it's kind of been a, it's, you know, getting into the schools is always a little, there's barriers, right, which is understandable and respect, we respect that. My son, Dylan, he is an eighth grader at Forest View Middle School. I've kind of put him in, and he's the first kid that has been to the Capitol. We were partners with the Minnesota Smoke-Free Generation, and we were advocating for the flavor band last fall. And so we met with sectors and representatives, and Dylan was both able to share his personal experience with substances. I mean, he has some older siblings that experienced with vaping and nicotine and drinking, and so he was able to share how that negatively impacted his life. And so we hope in the next year for that just to grow and to gain other children that also have the same passion. We're in the community. We just continue to expand and been out to the Brainerd and Baxter Night Outs. We've been at the March Expo, Crow Wing County Fair. Hopefully you all stopped there and visited us. We've kind of started with an anti-vaping campaign this year. We do, we will be targeting THC and alcohol as well, and our main goal is just to reduce the use in our youth. And so we provide resources and guide them to other organizations in the community that can help them. Additional successes are also the, like I spoke with the anti-vaping campaign, Be Smart, Don't Start. We've also supported the Narcan vending machine in the local Crow Wing County jail lobby, which is free for the community, and also just continued training and education to our members during our monthly meetings. We've had the Lake City Drug Investigative Division, and they came and kind of educated us on local drug trends. And then we also partner with Wilder Research, and they provide all our data from Minnesota student surveys, and also the Know the Truth data that we receive by surveys that we provide the youth when we're in the schools. And so one of my biggest successes is our annual recovery, our Walk for Recovery. And so that was just this past week on Thursday. It was a huge success. Like I said, it's the third annual. We almost doubled in size. We added the dunk tank, and we had the law enforcement in there, so that was a huge hit. We estimated serving 325 people that evening. We provided free Dobro's Pizza. We held our first mock tail bar hosted by Just Juice, and so that was really kind of a dream of mine of just instead of talking the talk, walking the walk alongside the recovery community and providing them an atmosphere and a space to just celebrate. And so we also had face painting, rock painting. We had Lakeland News there, the big guy, Eric. And so, like I said, it was a huge success, and so I'm super thankful to be a part of that. We have some important events coming up, and so this Thursday, we're going to have Chad. He's going to be speaking to law enforcement, first aid, and any family members that are also, you know, support people in that line of work. And so it's free, and so that's going to be at the Arts Center. So everyone's welcome. We also have next week, Wednesday, open to the community, The Tall Cop is going to be there, educating on, he used to be in law enforcement. They call him Tall because he is tall. And so there is also going to be on Thursday, an all-day seminar for professionals working in the substance use field. And so that again is a free event. Both of those are sponsored by Blade, and so I just encourage anybody that's available to come out and spread the word. One more event that we have in the near future is Blade partnering with the law enforcement. And this year, or this, it's, this event is nationwide, and we're part, we do it twice a year, and this time is going to be at the Brainerd Cup Foods. And it's just a safe place for people to come and use or deposit their misused or expired or unwanted medication. And so just kind of joining forces with that opiate, you know, fighting the opiate epidemic, getting people talking about it. Again, a lot of people, even people that I personally know that have started with, you know, they ended with a heroin addiction, but it started with just some medication that was left over from grandma or mom or a husband. So it's an important topic that we continue to want to talk about, but, and just to keep it short, like I said, we want to continue, we started focused with the anti-vaping, but we really want to also bring awareness and education around underage drinking and the THC use, which we're all kind of getting used to in Minnesota. But also with that youth leadership council, educating them to advocate for their futures and teaching them also how laws and ordinances work and how to make change. And then we also hope to partner with law enforcement, with the responsible beverage serving training with local organizations, and also kind of maybe some partnering with law enforcement as well for incentivizing local businesses for not serving minors and IDing properly. I apologize, I kind of stumbled over my words there. But we meet the fourth Friday of every month. It is hybrid. It's in-person and virtual, and so definitely get ahold of me or any one of the members, and we'd love to have you. So again, thank you for this time. Any questions?
Any questions?
President Bevins?
Yeah, Mr. Chesak.
Yes, thank you for your presentation. I, you're not condoning the use of the recreational marijuana, then? That's correct, right?
Correct.
Okay, so do you know if the Blade organization, or in one way or another, pushed back on the legislation to approve that at the state level?
We were not involved with any of that.
You didn't push back? You didn't?
Yeah, definitely hasn't been in any, any of our agendas.
No, did you, so you did not make an effort to push back against the legislation approving the recreational?
No.
You did not? Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Kelly, I have a question.
Yeah.
The vending machine, the Narcan vending machine. I think I asked somebody before it came out to the jail whether it was going to be, is it the nasal spray or is it the needle injection?
Nasal.
Nasal spray?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Again, thank, I'll echo Mr. Chesak. Thank you so much for coming. How does somebody get involved with helping? Do you have a phone number?
Yeah, well, so Facebook, I'm very active on Facebook, and you could always message, but Tony has my email, and I could always afford a calendar invite. So by myself, talia.broadhead@mmpra.org.
Perfect. Can you do that one more time, slow?
Yes, talia.
I have red hair.
dot broadhead@mmpra.org.
Perfect, thank you. Or you can get ahold of City Hall or go on Facebook. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chesak, hang on, Talia.
I just, I don't have a credit, just want to remind people, the staff, their mics.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Jeff Chesak just wanted to remind staff and council members, turn your mics on. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, Kelly.
You bet. Item seven is council committee report. Seven A is Personnel Finance Committee Chairman, Gabe Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have six items, the first of which is to authorize the sale of a retired CSO vehicle, and the motion is to authorize the sale of the retired Community Service Officer vehicle number 443 using Enterprise Fleet Management, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson, a second by Stunek. Chairman Johnson.
Twenty nineteen Ford F-150 with like 40,000 miles on it.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chesak.
Is this an auction or just an outright sale? Mr. Johnson, do you know?
It's using Enterprise Fleet Management. Maybe Connie would have a better understanding of how it goes.
Connie Hillman?
Correct. So the motion is to utilize Enterprise Fleet Management to sell the vehicle. So we lease our vehicles to Enterprise. They will sell our vehicles on their website, and we get the proceeds.
Is it something that anybody can bid on, or?
I believe so, yes.
Okay.
It is an auction type.
It is an auction type. Thank you. Thank you. Any further discussion?
I don't know.
Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you. Next up is adoption of a resolution, and the motion is to adopt the resolution authorizing Police Chief John Davis the authority to execute the 2024 Traffic Safety Enforcement Grant, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson, a second by Stunek. Chairman Johnson.
This is a grant we get every year. We manage it administratively here in the city, but we work with all the law enforcement agencies around on this grant.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All, oh, it's a resolution? Tony, please call the roll.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunek.
Yes.
Stingline.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Chesak.
Yes.
Bevins.
Yes, that resolution is adopted. Please proceed.
I think next up is our fee schedule, and the motion out of committee is to direct staff to use the proposed fee schedule and create an ordinance, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson, a second by Stunek. Chairman Johnson.
So we have, the fee schedule is being changed on a few of our fees, but mainly the fee schedule in the past has just been adopted by resolution, and it hasn't been in an ordinance anywhere. And staff is saying it's probably a better idea if we have an adopted ordinance with our fee schedules. So they recommend going in that direction, and that's what this motion does.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
We just, we have an ordinance then coming back before us once we, if we approve this? Is that how this?
An ordinance will come before us, yeah.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Please proceed.
I think next up is the approval of the health insurance renewal, and the motion is to approve the 2025 health insurance renewal as received from the Better Health Collective with an average 8% annual increase across all four of our health plans and with a 15% rate cap on our 2026 renewal, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson, a second by Stunek. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Please proceed.
Okay, next up is the HRA preliminary levy request. We had a split vote in committee on this. The HRA requested $218,991. Out of committee, we had a two-to-one vote approving $173,960, which is what their levy was last year. I'm not going to make a motion now because it'll be part of the resolution setting the preliminary levy later.
Okay. Any comment on the HRA levy?
Well, could I ask, just, okay, so we're not taking it as a recommendation from PNF? Now you're going to wait till we set our levy?
That's what he just said.
Yeah, unless, and, okay, so essentially you're moving it to that portion of our?
Yeah, instead of voting on it twice, yeah, just vote on it once.
Right, thank you.
Well, the only thing is, the only thing is, you may, you may complicate the general levy vote.
Okay, I'll make a motion then.
I think it'd be cleaner.
Okay, I'd move to set the HRA 2025 preliminary levy at $173,960, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson, a second by Stunek. Chairman Johnson.
This is the amount they levied last year, not the amount they requested for this year.
Got it. Any further discussion? Chairman O'Day.
I just have a question. We received a letter from Duval, Chairman Duval, requesting that we go with the higher amount, but I wasn't, in that letter, I didn't see anything that was really specific for the difference in what they're trying to levy versus what they had last year. Can you, can you fill me in on that?
Yeah, so the primary difference is they were, they increased a line item by $45,000. That is board initiatives, something like that. It's up by $45,000 in the, in the chance that the Brainerd Oaks developer may get a Minnesota housing grant and may possibly need some gap funding. Like, we don't know what that amount is or would be. It's just kind of a placeholder number. And then also, with that levy request, it increased their fund balance over at the HRA by $30,000.
Thank you. Thank you. Any further discussion?
Mr. Bevins?
Mr. Chesak.
As I understand, the developer at the Outlet F is looking to get $100,000 of Housing Trust Fund dollars? Is that what, and then this would be in addition to that, the $45,000 that they want in addition to their increase? That's where the increase comes from?
Yeah, that's what that, that's what that proposed budget is, yes.
So our taxpayers are already levied for the Housing Trust Fund, so I, that's all I needed. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All right, we have a motion by Johnson, a second by Stunek. We've heard discussion. All in favor of the HRA levy, the exact amount, I think, was 173,960. Hearing no further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Please proceed. Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Yeah, thank you. And the final item was preliminary park board budget. We had a little bit of discussion on this. Their budget, operating budget is an 18% increase in '25 over '24. So we just directed staff to kind of take a second look at it and go talk to the park board and see if there's anything in that 18% increase that can be put off to future years. That's just not a sustainable rate of increasing, you know? But looking at it, the, it's largely personnel services, so there's really not much we can do there. We have a settled contract, and that is what it is. But anyway, we directed staff to go back to the park board and come back to the council with ideas.
Thank you. No motion on this out of PNF?
No motion.
Any comments or questions on the preliminary park board budget? Hearing none?
May I ask a question?
Yes.
So I understand that the, part of the increase was in operations was two seasonal full-time staff at a cost of roughly $8,000 or $9,000 each?
Mm-hmm.
What's the percentage, if somebody could come up with a rough idea, of that 18% that that would cover? Just those two? Is there some?
Last year, Jeff, their budget was basically a million dollars flat, so every $10,000 is 1%.
Okay, so like about one and a half to one and three quarters?
Yeah.
Okay.
About 1.8.
Yeah, 1.8.
Close.
There you go.
All right. Any other questions on the park board budget? Hearing none. Mr. Chair?
End of report.
Thank you very much. Next up is seven B, Safety and Public Works Committee Chairman, Mr. Mike O'Day.
Thank you, Mr. President. We also had six items tonight, first of which was the bids for downtown snow removal for '24, '25 winter. A motion coming out of staff, or out of committee, was to go with staff's recommendation, awarding the '24, '25 downtown snow removal services contract to Advantage Home Pros. I so move.
Second. We have a motion by O'Day, a second by Chesak. Any discussion, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, we had two very similar bids, very, very similar. This, the math gets better when there's higher amounts of snow with this bid. We are assured that they have the same types or similar types of equipment. This is the first time we've gone with anyone besides Tom's Baco, as long as I know. And Tom's has always done a good job. It just came down to the number on the bid, I guess, and we'll just see how Advantage does in taking care of the snow.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Chesak.
I think what we see here is potentially a lower cost next year, based on somebody else looking at this and maybe sharpening in their pencils a little more for next year.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Chairman Johnson.
Yeah, I think it's kind of a risk to go away from what you know is reliable to save like 13 cents, 18 cents, or whatever it is, on four inches of snow. But, you know, if this is staff's recommendation, they're confident in it. I think let's go forward with it, and maybe, maybe we do see lower bids in future years now that we have two willing businesses willing to get in on it. So I support it.
Thank you. Mr. Stunek.
I have a question.
Yes.
In the event that we're, I mean, we're going with Advantage Home Pros, what if halfway through the snow season, we're not happy with their performance? Is there any way of getting out of that and going backward to Tom's Baco or anything like that, or are we stuck? Just curious.
If they're not meeting the specifications of the contract, that is something that we can address through a notice to cure in the contract.
Yeah, I don't know how you could ever answer that for both of them.
No, but I just, it came across my brain.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none. The motion is to Advantage Home Pros. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you. Item number two was Bridge Inspection Services proposal, and motion coming out of committee was to approve the proposal from Bolton and Mink for Bridge Inspection Services in the amount of $2,400, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by O'Day, a second by Stingline. Any discussion? Mr. Chair?
Something that we have to do every couple of years, get our bridges inspected. These guys are familiar with it, and it's a minimal cost in the grand scheme of things.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you. Item number three was traffic control change at intersection of Fifth Avenue Northeast and D Street Northeast. After some discussion, the motion coming out of committee was to leave the intersection as is, and I so move.
Second. We have a motion by O'Day, a second by Chesak. Any discussion? Mr. O'Day?
Yeah, if you guys remember, a meeting or two ago, Mr. Chesak had a request to look at this intersection, see if we could make it any safer. Staff's research kind of showed that it didn't, weren't being a four-way stop just due to traffic counts and pedestrian crossings and everything else that was counted. So we could technically remove the north and south stop sign and possibly improve it, but our discussions, we just decided the traffic collisions in the last five years and everything didn't really warrant making a change at this time, and maybe we'll just look into it after we do the 210 project and traffic changes through northeast, which inevitably it will. That was kind of what we decided on.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you. Next item was requested direction by staff regarding signs within the right of way, and this was a split vote, but the motion coming out of committee, two-to-one vote, was to stay complaint-based with our signed complaints, and I so move.
Second. We have a motion by O'Day, a second by Chesak. Any discussion? Mr. Chair?
Obviously, we're in election season. Sometimes we have signs pop up in areas where they're not supposed to be through state law. Most people know they have to keep it behind the sidewalk. Some people don't. We do receive some complaints, just like any other law or ordinance that we have to follow. We just decided, some of us decided, that we should just keep it complaint-based, knowing the risk that maybe one side receives complaints more than the other side. I don't know what sides I'm talking about, but maybe you guys do. That is the motion.
Excellent. Tiffany, Stingline?
I was the dissenting vote. I would rather see us, for this one thing, signs, have staff actively enforce it, just because I think it puts staff in a really... Have staff actively enforce it, just because I think it puts staff in a really awkward place to try and explain why they took those signs but not those signs, whichever signs are which, or all of the signs. So that's why I did not support the motion.
Thank you. Mr. Chesick.
After hearing what Tiffany just said, perhaps we could have another motion coming out of here, if you would allow, that if staff is called to a location where there's an improper sign place...
Don't make the motion.
And they see...
We have a motion.
I'm not making a motion.
Sounds like you are.
I'm making a comment.
Okay.
I'm not making a motion. I say I move to do that. I'm not doing that. I said perhaps, perhaps if this passes, we could also have staff, if they're called to a location, and they see other signs in the near vicinity, they also take care of those if there's a complaint about a sign or signs. If staff is on location and sees that. That's what I would probably suggest if I could be allowed to do that once we vote on this.
Any further discussion? Chairman Johnson.
I've noticed a lot of Mike O'Dea signs in the public right-of-way. I'd like to plot complaints on all of them right now.
Not enough.
Can we replace them with mine?
I... Since everybody spoke, I'm going to support no on this. I think if it's in the right-of-way, pick it up. It's too mu... You know better. Every person running knows better. If you're going to stick it in the right-of-way, it should be picked up. You can go down to the city garage and pick it up and stick it back in the yard. And I agree with Tiffany. I think this really puts a lot of... And you just heard. Gabe Johnson, tongue-in-cheek, mentioned the Mike O'Dea signs, but rest assured, this will happen. And I think if somebody complains, that's great, complain. But staff should have the right to pick them all up without waiting for somebody to complain and create a... You know, create any potential political dissension with our staff. If you want to speak again, everybody's going to speak again.
Well, I have to defend my record.
Well, I'm pretty sure that was tongue-in-cheek.
I know, but I will... I do have more comments.
Yeah, we're going to go round two on the political signs, which is against our ordinance, by the way, to have them in the right-of-way. Go ahead.
All right. So I can't help when people put Mike O'Dea signs right next to the street. I don't put them there, for the record.
I don't either.
I can't help where people move them, but I do put them in legal areas. But it has nothing to do with why or why I say that we should keep it more of a common sense approach. I don't think that we should have our staff out there aggressively managing where signs are and measuring how many feet from the curb and the way that we used to do it with grass. It works so much better when we do it complaint-based and use common sense. If our staff sees a sign that's clearly not in a legal spot, if it's in a park, if it's on a boulevard, or if it's clearly in the right-of-way where it's not supposed to be between the street and the sidewalk, then go ahead. But we don't need to send our staff out like some kind of Gestapo of election signs. This is a temporary thing that's going to last about six or seven more weeks. That's all.
Mr. Mayor.
I 100% agree with you, Mike, on that. If we remember the last time that we had sign gate at the city of Brainerd, I don't wish to relive that. So let's just take a common sense approach to this. If it's a danger, if there's a gigantic sign in the tri... Wait, listen. You got a giant sign in the Triangle of Sight at a stop sign. Potentially, we got to have something like that removed. But if we're driving around picking up people's signs, we're wasting the citizens' time and money.
Thank you. Mr. Stunek was next.
Oh, go ahead.
Mr. Johnson.
I'll reaffirm my support for this motion and just to save the previous sign gates, I think if you'll remember, it wasn't really politicians. It was a lot of real estate agents who had their signs picked up and were not very happy with the city of Brainerd.
You said it. Real estate sign gate. Okay. Anybody else got something burdened they need to say?
Yeah, I'll say what I said in committee. I had a sign gate issue where a neighbor...
Mr. Chesick, go ahead.
I am. The individual had the sign on his side of the sidewalk, and staff came along and said, "We're taking this." And he said, "Why?" "Because we have to." And it was in the proper place. So our staff, if they're going to do this, they need discretion, they use better discretion than was... That occurred during the sign gate, so...
Right.
But I'm in favor of the motion.
Tiffany, round two. Okay. I don't... I'm not sure that anybody suggested that staff should be out looking for signs. It's just a matter of if they see them versus calling in. So if you vote in favor, if you vote aye, you're voting in favor of complaint-based sign gate. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, aye, and the motion passes. Let's proceed.
Thank you. Item number five, we had a consideration of past citations for 1002 15th Street Southeast. Motion coming out of committee was to forgive the owner or previous owner, Mr. Deegan, $500 worth of the $717.10 that were in question, and ISO move.
Second. Motion by O'Dea, second by Chesick. Any discussion? Mr. Chair.
So this was a bit of a complicated issue. Mr. Deegan spoke to us at committee and explained his side of it. He had a tenant that he could not evict in a timely fashion due to a lot of different complicating factors. There were separate citations from one of our staff in community development, and then there was another set of citations for other issues from a different part of our staff. They did not communicate. This is all last year or the year before, maybe a combination of both. In the end, the property is cleaned up. It has actually been sold, I believe. And in that sale, Mr. Deegan noticed the $717 still remaining as a citation. He did offer, you know, paying the administrative part of it. That's where we came up to a random number of $500 instead of the full $717. If you agree with it, vote yes.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you. The last item we had was another citation discussion, considering past citations and abatements for 1113 Rosewood Street, and this is Mr. Dave Braverman. Motion coming out of committee was to forgive all citations aside from abatement charges, and ISO move.
Second. Motion by O'Dea, second by Chesick. Any discussion?
I can explain a little bit of it. I think we've all heard from this individual, at least at SPW once before, maybe at the council level as well. Mr. Braverman wasn't able to get into his property due to some legal constraints from a past partner. He couldn't clean it up. The person living in the house kind of had him strapped in that way. But now he has taken control of his house. He's got it cleaned up. The abatement charges are the abatement charges. We don't typically forgive those, but we did forgive him in citations. I think it was over $4,000 altogether to help him get back to taking care of his property and staying on his feet.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Please proceed.
End of report.
Thank you very much. Number eight is unfinished business. Number eight A is accepting the resignation of Colin Francis from the planning commission. Do we need to accept this? I think we probably should. Is there a motion?
ISO move.
Second.
By Johnson, second by Stingline. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Colin Francis. Item B is call for applicants. We'll turn it over to Mayor Flapjack Bedo.
Whoa, that's a new one. Wow. All right. I'll take it. The following applications are available on our website. Check us out, see if you want to join us, see if you want to have some fun in some committees. Charter Commission, two terms expiring 2026, two terms expiring 2025. Transportation Advisory Committee, two terms expiring 2026. We also have one term on the EDA, the Economic Development Authority, expiring 2026.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and as council president, I have two positions open on one of my absolute favorite commissions next to the tree commission, of course. With all respect, the parking commission, one term to expire in 2026 and one term to expire in 2028. Item 8C is discussion of the airport commission levy request. I believe this is what we had tabled from last time. Correct, Mr. Administrator? Okay. Do we handle the table first, or is it okay if we have a little discussion? Mr. Attorney? Handle the table first. Okay. So the motion was, if I'm not mistaken, out of PNF was a motion by Terry, second by Stunek. Am I right? For the airport, was it 150 even?
Yes.
Okay, so that motion is brought back on the table. Motion by Terry, second by Stunek. Any discussion? Chairman Johnson.
Okay, I was the no vote in committee. You know, since we know the county isn't looking at increasing their contribution to the airport, and we're in a rough budget year, I saw no reason for us to increase ours, even if it was such a small amount. So I voted no, thinking we should hold it flat.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Chesick.
Throughout this process, going back, well, last November, when we got the first initial ask of the county to consider taking over the ownership, that fell apart here not too recently. And so now we're talking airport levy discussion because of our budget, upcoming levy and budget. And one of the things that was very clear throughout the whole process was... And I worked very closely with Commissioner Corrigan on this. It was always the fair thing to do is for the county to take it over so that levy, the levy, is shared throughout the entire county, the entire levy. And now when we find out, or the county finds out, that there's some staffing requirements, because that's what was determined on August 1st, the FAA got all worked out of what we need to do for ownership. And once the... Once it was determined that there's going to be additional staff work for county employees if they were to take over ownership, they just said, "No, we're not interested." But like, the levy still sits there, which I think everybody agrees is completely unfair for the city to pick up virtually half of this 300, what, $15,000, 312, whatever it is, of a... By splitting it essentially with the county, and Brainerd's taxed twice. Not double, but twice. And I'm not in favor of this 150, and I'll be voting no.
Thank you, Mr. Chesick. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none? Okay, the motion was for the 150,000? I... You know, I think if there's... Well, let's try it this way. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Aye. It appears to be a tie. So I've got Stunek, Stingline, and O'Dea affirmative, Chesick, Johnson, and Bevins as a negative. Mr. Mayor? Flapjack?
Right, right.
It's not coming up?
It is coming up.
How much is 150,000 in flapjacks?
I mean, right now, it's not really the time to talk about flapjacks. Unless they're aerial born. Just so I'm clear on this, this is an increase from 126 to 150, correct?
146.
146. I had written down 126.
146, 080.
080, okay. Due to our budgetary concerns right now, and Zalea's onto the park board, we're sending budgets back to the park board. Right now is the time in which we have got to start tightening our belts. We heard it loud and clear online when we presented what our preliminary may be. We are in a position right now where we have to start looking at dollars and cents, and so I am in favor of keeping the levy as was, so I am a no vote on this.
And the motion fails four to three. Mr. Chair? Mr. Chesick.
I move that we set our levy for the airport at $1,000.
We have a motion by Chesick to set the airport levy at $1,000. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Johnson. Let's discuss it.
Yeah.
Mr. Chesick.
Sure. Like I said earlier, this is an unfair situation for Brainerd taxpayers who I represent, and everybody here represents them. There's also three county board members that represent the same taxpayers, all of us do. They have three districts throughout the city of Brainerd, and there's no doubt... Nobody's going to give me a rational explanation. I can't find it. I've asked. There's no rational explanation why the county cannot administer this entire levy. And it's based on one thing, and that's fairness. And when you're taxing people twice, there's no other explanation for that. There's no other example of unfairness that I've ever heard of. And if you spread this levy out against the whole entire county tax base, it's a much easier pill to swallow for everybody. And just take, for instance, any city in Crow Wing County outside of Brainerd. The benefits the airport brings are equal, whether it's Nisla, Crosby, Baxter, and those three cities pay through their property tax to Crow Wing County. We have it twice when you live in Brainerd. So if you own a business in Brainerd, you live in Brainerd, now you get it four times. So I think that the county has a chance here to take on an additional levy increase, because they have a meeting a week from tomorrow, a regular meeting, that they can certainly amend what they've already set as a preliminary levy of their 166 and change, 166,000. And they have the opportunity now to do the right thing. And we still have our stake in the game, our horse in the race with finance. Thank you, Connie. HR, thank you, Chris. IT, thank you, Sean. And all that work is still administered by who? The Brainerd taxpayers paying salaries for these people. And I think it's a fair thing to do, and if somebody's got a rational reason why we shouldn't do this, I'd love to hear it.
Thank you, Mr. Chesick. Chairman Johnson.
May I ask the attorney a question?
Absolutely.
Joe, based on your understanding of the ordinance that says we contribute the same amount, but one side can give more, or one side can... Can we just set it to $1,000 this year? And are we following our airport ordinance if we do that?
So, Mayor and Council, might, you know, have the ordinance finally... That was an ordinance adopted by both parties, as I recall. And it contained language to the effect that if one party reduces the levy, then it's reduced by the other party as well. Obviously, $1,000 isn't going to go anywhere. So, yeah, I mean, can you do it? As I understand it, without the document in front of me, yes, you can do it. I would assume it's going to lead to further discussions by the parties, but... Nothing stops you from doing it.
Mr. Johnson has the floor.
Well, that answers my question.
Thank you.
I guess, yeah, I don't have anything else right now.
Thank you. Let's see if anybody who hasn't spoken wants to speak.
Joe was incorrect. I think I just wanted to clarify.
Well, okay.
He said that if one side reduces, the other does as well. Is that what I heard?
I believe that the other side can, yes.
Can. Yeah, they can. Okay, they don't have to.
Don't have to.
But again, I don't have that document in front of me either.
That's what I want clarification on.
Yep. That's the way I read it, Mr. Chesick. Thank you.
Okay.
Any further discussion? I have a comment, but I'll let Mr. O'Dea go.
I missed in the motion, is this a preliminary, or are we setting the airport levy officially right here?
Well, everything's preliminary until we adopt.
Okay, that's all.
So we can't go... But we can't go up, correct? We can go down. We can reduce it. So if we set it at this, this will be the max. Preliminary levy, okay. I... I mean, $1,000, I understand that this is a situation... I'm sorry, Tiffany, you can go after me.
No, yeah, I can go.
Okay. I just... If you read the letter from Debbie Erickson saying they declined to even discuss it with us. We've been on the... You know, we've been on this for over a year now, since last fall, and at this point, they still refuse to discuss it. And I have to admit, that's a little disappointing. Let them set the... Let them set their levy where they need to be, and I think... I think we need to do what's best for our taxpayers, and our taxpayers are still paying them $1,000 more than anybody else in the county. As I said last council meeting, I think this county administering this levy could be the best thing for the airport. The fact that they've chosen not to even discuss, not to even put it on the agenda, sort of disappoints me. Tiff, not sort of, really disappoints me. Tiffany?
Well, I just noticed Connie grimacing, and I wanted to hear what was on her mind, if we can.
I don't see a problem with that.
I was just saying that you're setting the preliminary levy. If you set it at $1,000 and then we decide later on we want to give them $146,080 or whatever it is, we would have to... or whatever it is, we would have to reduce our levy if we lower the levy to the $1,000. Does that make sense? I mean, we could raise the airport's levy, but then we're going to have to cut our operating levy if we go all the way down to the $1,000 when we're setting our preliminary levy. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that was it, that was it. Just when the finance director makes a face like that, I want to know what she's thinking.
Anybody want to go around two? Chief, you haven't spoke yet. No? Anybody need to go around two? Okay, the motion is to set the preliminary airport levy at $1,000. Motion by Chesak, second by Johnson. And we've had a request for roll call, Tony?
O'Day?
Yes.
Stunek?
Yes.
Stangline?
No.
Johnson?
Yes.
Chesak?
Yes.
Bevins?
Yes, that motion passes. All right, next up is item 8D, the final reading of proposed ordinance 1572, prohibiting outdoor storage for crypto mining and similar uses. We'll start with Mr. Krambeck. Anything you'd like to add to what's in our packet?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. The primary language added to the ordinance in outdoor storage is prohibiting it in all zoning districts for crypto mining facilities, data centers, AI centers, and similar uses. Staff also provided general cleanup in this section as there were references to old sections of code, as well as incorrect indentations. Also with that, staff does recommend to conduct the final reading of proposed ordinance 1572 and dispense with the actual reading. Note, a vote to dispense with the actual reading of the ordinance must be unanimous. And then second, to approve proposed ordinance 1572. And I can answer any questions.
Any questions of staff? Any questions of staff? Okay, anybody wish to make a motion on the final reading of proposed ordinance 1572?
Mr. President, I move that we conduct the final reading of proposed ordinance 1572 and dispense with the actual reading.
Second.
We have a motion by Stangline, a second by Stunek. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor of the final reading? Say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? That motion carries unanimously. Next up is, we're looking for a motion to approve ordinance 1572.
So moved, Stangline.
Motion by Stangline, is there a second?
Second.
Second by O'Day, any discussion?
Say that I think this is just a step. I, I think we need to have, and I've said this before, you've all heard it before, I think we need to have a more global view, and the planning commission is going to get to that at some point.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Mr. Mayor?
Just clarification on your statement, global view being, being global on the issue, or global being global?
Uh, smaller than global, I guess. Global on the idea of sound.
Okay.
If we're going to do sound, we need to do sound.
Appreciate the clarification.
Sorry.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, Tony, please call the roll.
O'Day?
Yes.
Stunek?
Yes.
Stangline?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Chesak?
Yes.
Bevins?
Yes, that ordinance is adopted. Next up is item 8E, final reading, proposed ordinance 1573, regulating garage requirements for residential housing units. Mr. Krambeck?
Thank you, Mr. President. So the zoning code requires garages and storage space for residential buildings with one to four units in all residential zoning districts. As proposed, the ordinance amendment would no longer require a garage for two to four unit buildings, while single-family homes would be required to either have a 12 by 20 garage, or a 10 by 12 shed to store items. The planning commission unanimously recommended approval as this is the quickest way that they can make a difference to affordable housing in the city of Brainerd. So with that, staff recommends to conduct the final reading of proposed ordinance 1573 and dispense with the actual reading. And second, to approve proposed ordinance 1573, and I can answer any questions.
Any questions of staff on the garages? Okay. Hearing none? Let's roll this out here. The first thing is, we're looking to, a motion to conduct the final reading of proposed ordinance 1573 and dispense with the actual reading.
So moved, Stangline.
Motion by Stangline, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Chesak. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? That motion carries unanimously. The second part of this is to adopt proposed ordinance 1573. Is there a move to adopt it?
So moved, Stangline.
Motion by Stangline, is there a second? By Chesak, any discussion? Hearing, Tiffany, Stangline?
Yeah, well, I just, I still expect most houses to be built with garages. The market will dictate that. But this gives some flexibility in what is required of builders and developers in our community.
Thank you, Tiffany. Thanks again for your service on planning and zoning. Hearing no further discussion? Tony, please call the roll.
O'Day?
Yes.
Stunek?
Yes.
Stangline?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Chesak?
Yes.
Bevins?
Yes, that resol, that ordinance is adopted. Item 8F is a resolution setting the 2025 preliminary levy for the city of Brainerd and the Brainerd HRA, which we've done, and move to set time and date for the next budget public hearing. Let's turn it over to Connie Hillman to see if she's got anything she'd like to add.
Thank you, so as you stated, the 2025 levy needs to be set by September 30th. The amount that was included in the resolution had the HRA's levy set at 173,960. Also included in the packet was information, very preliminary information on the estimated market value and the impact it would have, may have on tax capacity and the tax rate. Also included in the agenda request were budgets that have been, or updates that have been made to the budget. When the city is, when the council is setting the levy, it should set the levy in dollars. So included in the packet was an attachment called for use in setting the 2025 preliminary levy amount. With the airport levy at 146,080, we were at about an 8.2% increase, which is setting the levy to achieve a balanced budget at this point of 7,529,616. With the airport levy at, preliminary levy at $1,000, that could bring us down to a levy of 7,384,536, which is about a 6.12% increase over the levy. Granted, we can go down, but we cannot go up from what we set tonight. So the recommended action and the need from council is to adopt a resolution setting the 2025 preliminary levy and a motion to set the date and time for the budget public hearing, which generally we have on the second Monday in December. And this year, that would be December 9th at 6 o'clock.
That's a separate meeting?
That, well, it, it can be part of our regular scheduled meeting. Typically, we have set a, a separate meeting for the budget public hearing, but that's up to council.
One to double check. Any questions of our finance director? Tiffany, Stangline?
Could you repeat that number with the lowered airport levy?
The lower airport levy? With the lower airport levy, according to my calculations, it would be 7,384,536. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions of staff? Any other questions of staff? Okay, hearing none, we're looking for a motion. We'll look to our finance chair, Gabe Johnson, to lead us through this.
Okay, I'll give it a stab. Well, the move to set the preliminary levy for the city of Brainerd at 7,515,698, plus 173,960 for the HRA and ISO move.
We have a motion by Johnson, is there a second?
Second.
We have a, thank you, Tiffany. We have a second by Tiffany Stangline, Chairman Johnson?
So I, I picked 8%. I fully expect us to be below a 6% increase. We're going to have to cut some expenditures and, and increase some, find ways to increase revenue to the city between now and December. But I, I didn't think it fair to go down to the 6% with the airport at 1,000, because it may come back in a few months that the $1,000 levy isn't going to work for the airport, for the county, depending on what our discussions with the county happened between now and then. I think that flexibility should still be there, but that's just my opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Chairman O'Day?
Yeah, the, the way that the motion was worded made it sound like that number plus 173,000, that's what, my confusion.
Oh, the HRA is outside of the city levy.
A separate, a separate levy.
Two numbers, we had to announce both numbers, yeah.
I was just confused.
So, thank you. Good, good clarification. Any further discussion?
Could I get clarification?
Yeah.
Okay, I, so, help me out here. Okay, so with what Connie said, with the airport levy at 1,000, it was 7,380-some-odd thousand dollars. So if you leave out, for now, just don't include the HRA, what is that number? Did you include for the airport at what amount right now?
So, yeah, she said it was 7,380-something thousand. Yep, I went 7,515,000, so 130, 40,000 more than what we could do. And Jeff, that's because if the county comes back and says, we'll take on the levy in three years, but you guys, we really need you guys to still contribute this year, I want to have the flexibility to be able to do that.
Plus, it'll be a miracle.
Plus, if we, yeah, if we, Nick can get a call back at least, so we got that going for us.
So, so our earlier discussion of setting the airport levy is not included in your motion?
The airport levy is at 1,000 in my motion. I have baked in some room to work with, some 130,000 that isn't, isn't allocated to anything yet.
I just want to clarify, yeah, I got it, I understand.
Okay. Connie, I think, or Jeff, I think Connie wants to muddy the waters even further. Connie?
I was just going to clarify that with the airport levy at 146,80, it's an 8.2% increase. With the levy at, for the airport at $1,000, that would put us at 6.12% increase. Gabe's motion is to propose an 8% increase for the preliminary levy.
Room to work, Jeff.
Yeah, I like room.
All right, any further discussion? Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we're speaking to the public when we do these preliminary budgets. I have a gigantic problem with the notion that the city just presents numbers, and we just accept that, and we move forward, and we say that's it. That's the only thing we can do. We hear it time and time again that we have to be willing to cut our budgets and work within our means. And I want to tell the public that that is absolutely what the goal should be of this council. We have to set a preliminary, but then we need to do the work to work our, our way back to getting to a lower amount, because the taxpayers deserve that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any other comments? Hearing none, all, you want to go again? Sure, Mr. O'Day?
So I agree with Mr. Mayor Bedeau. This is the part of government that makes me sick. Every single year, automatically, we're just going to raise the levy. You never see it go down. But at some point, we have to look at our budget, every line item, and weigh each one, and realize some of that stuff we just can't afford. You don't do that at home. You don't dig into somebody else's bank account when you run out. That's essentially what we're doing. So setting this at an 8%, I don't like it. Set it at a 0% and go through your line items and find out what you can drop. We can't afford everything that we want. That's just the way it goes. So I'll, I'll vote no.
Thank you. Mr. President? Mr. Chesak?
Based on what I heard, I have a question for staff, and I think I know the answer. But it has to do with our engineers' request to have the street scanning equipment, software, whatever that is, for 30,000, I think. Is that still included in our levying budget?
It's in the capital budget.
Capital budget, but that's still part of our?
Yep, it's levy dollars.
Okay, that would be a confirm?
Jesse or Connie, either of you answer that?
If I remember correctly, that was included in the 2024 levy budget.
It did not pass last year.
It's in the 2025 budget at this point, yes.
And I, and I am not in favor of that, so if, if that comes out, I mean, I know it's 30,000, that's about a half, a little less than half a percent. So there's things like that to Mike O'Dace's point.
Right on.
You know, so we got it, we, we have to look at this between now and the final levy. So like, everybody's talking about here, let's put our thoughts together and look at some of the ways we can do this. And I just, I just, I just identified one of them, so.
Thank you. Any further discussion? I think we're ready to vote on the preliminary levy of 7,515,698, plus the 173,000 and, and change for the HRA. All in favor, say aye.
This is a resolution? This is a resolution?
This is a resolution, Tony, please call the roll.
O'Day?
No.
Stunek?
Yes.
Stangline?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Chesak?
No.
Bevins?
Yes, motion passes. All right, next up, so we have, let's look at the, um, do you want to do a separate Mon, the second Monday in December at 6 o'clock, as what we've done in the past? Or do you want to do it at a regular meeting? Anybody have any thoughts?
I, I'd rather do it at a regular meeting, which would be the second, I believe, right?
First meeting in December is, Connie, can you look up the date?
Yeah, it'd be the second.
December 2nd.
Perfect, is that a motion, Mr. Chesak?
Yes, a second.
A second, Mr. Johnson, any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? We have a date and time for the budget public hearing. Now, while we're on this, should we look at, do we need another workshop between now and then?
That is up to the council.
Anybody have a thought on that at this point in time?
I don't believe we do.
I, we can always identify a need at a later date than?
Yes, we can. Okay, so not at this time. We will move on to item 9, new business, looking to adopt a resolution declaring costs to be assessed for nuisance, downtown snow removal, and downtown special service assessments, and call for a public hearing. Jesse Dean, this is under your, this is under your purview? Anything you'd like to add to what's in our packet?
Thank you, Mr. President. So staff has prepared the costs to be assessed for the downtown special services district and nuisances for the previous year. The total costs for each are listed in the agenda item, and staff is recommending adoption of the attached resolution declaring costs to be assessed and calling for a public hearing on October 21st.
Excellent. Any questions of staff on the assessments for nuisance, downtown snow removal, and the downtown special services? Okay, hearing none, we're looking for a motion to adopt that resolution.
So moved.
Second.
By O'Day? Second by Stangline, any discussion on the motion? Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, Tony, please call the roll.
O'Day?
Yes.
Stunek?
Yes.
Stangline?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Chesak?
Yes.
Bevins?
Yes, that resolution is adopted. Item 9, new business B, is adopt, looking to adopt a resolution declaring costs to be assessed for improvement 2208, South Brainerd reconstruction assessments, and call for a public hearing. Mr. Dean, anything you'd like to add to what's in our packet?
Thank you, Mr. President. So similarly, staff has also prepared the costs to be assessed for the improvement 2208, the South Brainerd reconstruction project, which includes the reconstruction of the streets listed in the agenda item. The costs listed in the agenda item, and staff is recommending adoption of the attached resolution declaring costs to be assessed and calling for a public hearing also on October 21st.
Any questions of staff on improvement 2208? Hearing none, is there a motion to adopt a resolution declaring the costs to be assessed for improvement twenty-two oh eight?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Stingline, second by Chesak. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
O'Day?
Yes.
Stunek?
Yes.
Stingline?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Chesak?
Yes.
Bevins?
Yes, that resolution is adopted. Uh, next up is discussion on the parking commission. Mr. Kravik, let's discuss.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, so the parking commission worked on a parking plan that was adopted by city council in February twenty-twenty-two. Uh, staff would like to begin working on the implementation of some of the recommendations. Some of them are, already have been implemented. Um, so with that, staff has provided a couple options. Uh, parking commission is, is lacking right now on some members. I believe member, members Jaeger and Erickson would be available. Um, um, so with that, option one would be to meet with commission members Jaeger, Erickson, and then Mayor Bedeau as a liaison to make recommendations to city council, or option two would be to decommission the parking commission and have the safety and public works committee make future recommendations to city council, and I can answer any questions.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Kravik. Any questions of staff on the issue?
Yes.
Mr. Chesak?
So if you were to have the three, three members, is that, and the liaison, that's how many, is there three or two? Two.
So really, two of them, one of them hasn't responded. Um, so I believe because there's three members, two of them would constitute a quorum if I'm not mistaken at that point. Yep. So the attorney's nodding his head. Um...
That's what my question was.
Yep.
Okay.
Any other questions of staff? Mr. O'Day?
With our city code, we already have regulations for parking that would have to go through planning commission and, and different projects that people are building a new building or a house or whatever it might be, correct?
That's correct. Uh, parking commission, you know, probably one of their biggest things was, was looking at that parking study, um, that they did downtown and, and recommending that. Um, you know, the option would be, an option would be to decommission it this time, but if there were something large at the city council, uh, we want to implement, certainly could, um, reinstitute the parking commission at, at that time. I think it was decommissioned in the past from, from lack of membership. Um, so a few options there.
Okay. I just, with, splitting the, splitting basically those responsibilities between safety and public works and the planning commission, I think it's, it's okay. If we can't get people to get on the parking commission to have those discussions in the other committees, so I'm okay with that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You, you're saying taking forward the discussions that have already happened at that commission, correct?
That's correct.
So basically what he's saying is those, the stuff has already been brought forward, but now it would be relooking at where we are with it and then coming back with those recommendations that have been attached.
Okay. Mr. Chesak?
Hey, I, I just got to have quick clarification. How many members of the standing committee are there? And does that include a voting member liaison?
The liaison is not a voting member. Um, there's five total members. Right now, we officially have three, uh, but, um, two of them have, um, been, are able to potentially meet.
Okay, and if two of them meet, that's not a quorum.
It's, it's two out of the three, so I believe it then it would be a, a quorum then.
There's five standing, five members of the, of the committee. If you have...
Five slots.
But, yeah, that's five members. If you only have two show up, you don't have a quorum.
They only have three on.
But, but there's, but it's a five-member board. That's the full committee. You, two, two is not a quorum of five.
I have good news. I believe our attorney can shed light on this.
Yeah, there's two vacancies. So, while those are vacant, it shrinks to a three-person committee until you get two more back on that committee again. So, right now, you've got a three-person committee and two people are a quorum of that three-person committee.
Okay, I guess that's a... So, a vacancy is no longer a...
Yeah.
All right.
Doesn't count. Okay? Any, any other questions of staff? Okay, so staffs, I presume, so the reason this is on there is looking for some sort of direction from council. Staff gives two options. Option one, which is meeting with the two out of three remaining members and Mayor Bedeau to make any recommendations to the council. Option two would be to decommission the parking commission, which would certainly be my choice since I'm the one who voted against having the parking commission come back all by my lonesome the second time, uh, or maybe have another idea, you know? So, let's give some direction to staff. Chairman Johnson?
I'd move option two.
Thank you. Option two, decommissioning the parking commission. I'm kind of surprised that Kevin Jaeger stayed on this one. We have a motion by Johnson, a second by O'Day, to choose option two, decommission the parking commission, and have the safety and public works committee make future recommendations to the city council. Any questions on the motion? Any comments on the motion?
Yes.
Miss, yeah, okay. We're gonna go Mayor Bedeau first, because we always make him last, then Tiffany, then Chesak.
As the liaison to this fine, fine group of people.
You can be on the tree.
Uh, well, the tree group no longer exists as well. Uh, I would just like to say that the work that has been done by these fine individuals was, was grand and fantastic, and I really appreciate all of their efforts, and this is, again, not an indication that the city of Brainerd does not take parking serious. We most certainly do.
Is there any truth, Mr. Mayor, to we're bringing back parking meters downtown?
I believe that was in the report that was presented, so maybe, maybe removing the commission is safe.
All right, Tiffany Stingline?
Uh, I'm, I'm gonna vote yes, but I, I am concerned. I think this is the third commission we have decommissioned and put on SPW since I've been on SPW. I'm not saying that I'm overworked. I'm not, but I, I want to see more citizen engagement and, um, but no, I don't think the parking commission is where they need to be.
Thank you. Mr. Chesak?
Yes, um, I'll be voting no because we always put things in a committee when there's nothing wrong at all about having the full council have this discussion because it winds up here anyway, and then people don't get the opportunity to be part of it in committee because they're not in the committee. So, I'll be voting no and making a motion if it fails to have the full council be the parking commission or take on that role.
Gotcha. I'll vote down here. Mr. Chairman Johnson?
As a former member of the decommissioned tree committee, I'm getting my revenge on a different city committee here.
Appreciate that type of vitriol. Mr. Stunek?
I give up.
You came here for this. Chief, you gotta have something. You're sick, you're dying, you come with your last dying breath.
Say that.
All right. All in favor of option two, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign?
Aye.
It passes. Let's, got, Mr. Kravik? Okay, perfect. Next up is item ten, the public forum. This is time allocated for citizens to bring matters not on the agenda to the, uh, to the attention of the council. We like to have, keep it to three to five minutes, and it's eight forty-six, and the, um, public forum is open. If you are online and wish to speak, uh, star three notifies us that you have something to say, and then star six unmute your microphone. I'll ask a second time if there's anybody who wishes to speak to the council on any items not on the agenda, and I will close the public forum at eight forty-seven. Uh, let's move on to, uh, staff reports. We'll go to my right, Mr. Sharper, dear, from the HRA. Welcome.
Good to see you in person. Uh, a couple of updates. Uh, workforce housing development program grant that is going in front of Minnesota Housing next Thursday, the twenty-sixth. If you remember, the city did, uh, apply for on behalf of two projects, eight oh five Laurel and that Outlot F project, so we're crossing our fingers that we're gonna get some good news that Minnesota Housing is going to fund those projects. More to come, but that is set to go to their board next Thursday. Uh, we are wrapping up our project at the North Star Building, exterior project. If you've driven by it, you'll see a very, very nice new retaining wall. Retaining walls are very expensive, as Counselor Johnson mentioned a few weeks ago. It does look good, it looks sharp. I think it adds to the aesthetic for the, the Lyman Puy White Park, too, as well. Blends in pretty well. Uh, last item, uh, if anybody has nothing to do tomorrow, uh, I will be speaking at the Rosenmeyer Forum at CLC at the Chalberg Theater at seven o'clock with our former city administrator, Jennifer Bergman. Uh, basically, it's gonna be a forum regarding housing issues and solutions, a community conversation. I'll be there, crickets or no crickets. Thank you.
Thank...
PM, Jeff.
What was the time again?
Seven PM.
Thank you. From the police department?
Nothing to add, thank you.
Thank you. From the ITGIS department, Mr. Strong?
I'll just mention, CLC now has a replacement for their, uh, video person starting soon. I'm meeting him tomorrow, so the CLC's content should be coming back to the cable channel shortly, I hope. So, it's been a ghost town for the last couple of months of just our live meetings, but there should be more coming again.
Thank you. Finance Director Hillman?
Nothing to add, thank you.
City Engineer Public Works Director Dean?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, the bridge rehab work on the Laurel Street Bridge, uh, it's getting close to wrapping up. The contractor's scheduling rehab of the joint that's gonna require closing of the Laurel Street Bridge, uh, beginning next Monday, the twenty-third, and it's gonna continue for almost two weeks until Friday, October fourth. Uh, we have notified our first responders, school transportation and bus transit service of the upcoming closure, uh, so keep your eyes open for that. Uh, staff was also notified after the packet went out that MINDOT was informed of a potential alternative way to move the grant funding for the pedestrian bridge back an additional year. Um, this would require the district to find another federally funded project that could be funded in twenty-twenty-five instead of twenty-twenty-six that they could essentially flip the funds with. Um, moving the funds back a year, uh, for us could provide staff an opportunity to keep applying for additional grant funding, uh, opportunities to supplement the one that we've already received, including applying again for the CRP grant, uh, which is the same one that we've already received, so we could go after it again. Um, there's going to be a meeting on October third to discuss those funds at the ATP level.
Thank you. Mr. Dan, Community Development Director Kravik?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a few items. Uh, so the EDA will be holding a special meeting, um, or, yeah, special meeting in the council chambers tomorrow at five PM to consider Block Metrics's, uh, recent proposal for immersion mining within a building at nineteen eleven TC Drive. Uh, Planning Commission will be holding a meeting this Wednesday at six PM, their regularly scheduled meeting, and will be, uh, continued discussions for design standards within the city of Brainerd. That's the current code that they're working on. And last but not least, we have the Touch a Truck and Flapjack Festival this weekend. Um, so it's Saturday, downtown Brainerd here. Um, for the, uh, Touch a Truck, we'll have big rigs set up, some of our city vehicles, kids can get in, honk horns, and then Flapjack Festival at the same time from ten to noon. Um, it's all-you-can-eat pancakes for, I believe, ten dollars.
Ten dollars adults, five dollars children.
Donation. And, uh, um, I, there's relays, there's a costume contest, so get your plaid shirts out, uh, and then there's, I believe, a pancake eating contest as well. So, fun things in downtown Brainerd.
Michael, Mike O'Day was an official winner, but not a winner. We already discussed that previously, but I would like that in...
Is that in dispute? He's been disputed?
Well, there was maybe some tomfoolery.
You gonna take his trophy back?
I just want to make sure we get that on the public record.
Is it his time for his report? Not yet, but that was well worth the addition to Mr. Kravik's report. Um, where, where do you go to all-you-can-eat flapjacks?
So, VFW and it's, I, I think the events are gonna be held in the Laurel Street parking lot?
VFW right on six, not the Legion this year. Okay, VFW, yes. Okay, and so the parking lot on Laurel. Got it. Anything from the attorney's office? HR Department, Schubert, our spanking new public utilities director.
Thank you, Mr. President.
We haven't broke you yet.
I have nothing to add.
Not it out. You don't know how to do this at all.
Yes, he does. I talked to him.
All right. Mr. Admin, Mr. Administrator?
Just a couple things. Thank you for a couple days of vacation last week. Had a good adventure on the motorcycle. I really enjoyed that great weather. We do have, uh, the wellness committee is, uh, putting on, they're hosting an employee appreciation event on September nineteenth from eleven-thirty to one-thirty at the Public Works Building, so please come out and attend if you can. Also, we have the Airport Exercise on September twentieth. I believe all of city council has gotten an invite to that. Uh, I want to say the RSVP was maybe tomorrow, maybe Wednesday?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. Um, so if you would like to attend that, I'm gonna be out there for at least a couple hours. That's a, that's a, that's a requirement from the FAA to maintain the, the one thirty-nine certificate that allows us to operate as an airport, so they'll be testing a lot of emergency response type activities. Also, the, uh, I have the ICMA Conference, that's the International City and County Managers Association. The national conference is coming up next week in Pittsburgh, so I am flying out on Saturday, so I will miss the flapjacks. I wish I could be there, but I'm flying out Saturday, and I will be flying back, uh, Wednesday of next week. I'll be out in Pittsburgh for a few days. That's all.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Can we keep, can we keep a few flapjacks, the ones that fall in the dirt?
I would, I would have it no other way.
No other way. I mean, he's a new city administrator, he's gotta learn flapjacks. Okay. Mr. Mayor, the Honorable Mayor Dave Bedeau.
Thank you. First of all, Jesse Dean, fantastic haircut. I just want to say that for the record, fantastic haircut. Secondly, uh, everyone was excited a couple weeks ago for this, uh, police versus firefighters softball showdown. I don't know if you heard about it. I, I think there was a mayor that'd been talking about it for quite a while. It went fantastic, and I just want to thank our officers and our firefighters for participating. Uh, we had two hundred and two paying adults that came through. We had, uh, a buttload of kids and then the families as well, so we were looking at over three hundred people that came out on a random Thursday, uh, during the school week to come have a good time, and, uh, I had a lot of fun. I think our police officers had a lot of fun. I think our firefighters had a lot, a lot of fun. Kevin Stunek is making an arm motion like his arm's sore. Uh, Kevin threw out, threw two first pitches. The first one dribbled. I wouldn't even ca, I would call it a kick. It was a kickball. It was, I thought we were playing a different sport. Anyways, uh, but it was a great event, and I, I just want to, uh, reiterate how important it is that we as a city continue to be out there and, and, uh, putting our best foot forward, and it's a good way to be a part of the community. I'm getting interrupted here while I'm talking, but, yeah, he wants to know where it was. Yeah, he wants to know, "Well, who won?" The police took home Paul Bunyan's bat as the trophy. First they broke, first they broke it, and then they won it. Uh, they are responsible for fixing that and returning it next year, but, uh, really a lot of fun. Can't say enough about, uh, how important it is for us as a city to just be out there and, and, uh, to gather up as families and have things in our community that we can do like this, and it was great. Had a lot of fun, and I thank you again to everybody involved, so. And then, it's homecoming week, ladies and gentlemen. I don't know if you know this or not, but it's a pretty important ordeal. High school football is a big deal. Not saying that because my son's on the team, I'm saying that because it's a big deal. For this Friday, the, uh, Brainerd Warriors will be taking on, I want to say it's Alexandria, but I might be wrong. I might be completely wrong as I'm saying it, but I just want to shout out to the, the school district for all the festivities they will be having this week, and, uh, it's just a lot of fun. Get out there and, uh, wear some blue and represent Brainerd. It's always a good time. So, homecoming game this Friday. End of report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You do a great job promoting our city, and I, I'm apologizing for everybody on this council that laughed when you called out Jesse Dean's hair, because I know you know hair. I mean, right?
There are two things that you always compliment people on, their shoes and their hair, and I just want to say, Jesse, good hair, good work.
Right on. I don't know what the rest of this stuff was doing on our agenda. We save the best for last.
Right.
Okay, next up is thirteen council commit, member reports. Uh, I always put Mr. Chesak on the spot, so this time I'm gonna go first. We'll let Mr. Chesak go last. So, who I talked to today is Mrs. Mary Coe. Practically, practically came with the water tower. She has given so many years of service to the city of Brainerd on the city council, and she had a, she had a medical concern, and she wanted me to let everybody know that she's doing fine, but she really wanted to thank the police department for fantastic stand-up service when she called nine-one-one. She said, "We are so lucky to live in a community with public servants like our, like, like Brainerd has," and she, you know Mrs. Coe means this from the bottom of her heart. So, she wanted everybody to know she's doing good. She told me how old she's gonna be. In thirty days, I am not gonna pass that on, but wow. That's all I'm gonna say. And thank you words from Mrs. Coe to, to the police department. Let's hop on to our, uh, to our, uh, committee chairs. They'll start on my right, Mr. Johnson?
Thank you. I, too, Mr. Mayor, am excited for the, uh, homecoming football game where I will be watching Brainerd host Morehead on Friday.
I was so close.
They were kinda like, Alex.
That's all.
Mr. Chair to my left, Mike O'Day.
These guys kinda took it away from me. I was gonna talk about homecoming and the, uh, the softball game, which was all, a lot of fun. Uh, looking forward to the homecoming game, also looking forward to flapping some trucks and trucking some flapjacks.
Right.
But on the, the basis of hair...
See, this is important.
You guys don't have enough grays. It's not, the, the style now is more gray, at least half, so keep working on it, though. Keep working on it.
Mr. Stunek, anything you, anything you can add?
I can't top any of this stuff.
Other stuff. Tiffany Stingline?
Uh, yeah, so I had kind of a busy month, so bear with me. I'm gonna talk fast. Softball game was great. Ma, I dragged my mom along. She got very confused a time or two when the scoreboard did some interesting things, but that was you. I told her it was your hair. And just not to look at it, it's fine. The police are winning. Um, so that's great. Uh, I attended the MINDOT open house, about three seventy-one and two-ten, and I really want to thank all the, the people in the public who came out to talk about it. Uh, it was a full house, a lot of people interested in, in the two-ten, three-seventy-one interchange there. It's gonna be interesting what's gonna go in there. I have some diagrams that I left sitting on the kitchen counter that I meant to bring to show you all, but maybe next time. Uh, had a TAC meeting for Region Five, uh, visioning session, uh, with some, developing a long-range regional plan.